We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of February 9th, 2012, Upshur County Commission Meeting.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, February 9th, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Arctani called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Arctani Commissioner, Creed Art Pletcher, Commissioner J.C. Rafferty, William A. Parker, and Terri Jo Bennett, Administrative Assistant. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. Virgil D. Miller, Upshur County Sheriff, appeared before the Commission to discuss personnel. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved Jason Queen as full-time Deputy Sheriff. Effective date of employment is February 19th, 2012, at the rate of $15.77 per hour. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved Troy Brady III as temporary part-time, less than 20 hours per week, Chief Deputy of Investigations. Effective date of employment is February 9th, 2012, at its former hourly rate. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, Commission approved West Virginia Wesleyan College Student, Michael Hurd, as intern through April 2012. Linda Neeling, Director of One Unique Recovery House, and Laura Queen, Board of Directors, member, appeared before the Commission and provided an overview of programs and statistics and requested funding for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. No action was taken. The Commission will review and consider the request during budget meetings in March. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of February 2, 2012, with practical corrections. Luke Elser, Project Manager, Northern Brown Field Assistance Center, appeared before the Commission and presented a check in the amount of $5,000 to be used for the Upshur County Youth Camp for environmental cleanup studies. The Commission recessed at 9:40 a.m. Commission reconvened at 10:00 a.m. After review by William Parker on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the number of election workers, poll workers, and emergency absentee ballot commissioners for the May primary election. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the transfer of Greg Harris to the position of Director of Facility Operations effective February 12, 2012, at the annual salary of $45,000. The duties of the position will include supervision and responsibilities regarding the Maintenance Department, supervision of the Animal Control Officer, and continuation as the Upshur County Safe Structures and Sites Ordinance Officer, and other facility-related functions. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the assignment of Animal Control Officer duties and responsibilities to Michael W. Kelly. Mr. Kelly will continue to assist with maintenance of grounds and buildings in addition to Animal Control Officer duties. The Commission will review his hourly rate during budget preparation. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the assignment of groundskeeping duties and responsibilities to Hartzell Cole. Mr. Cole will assist with the maintenance of buildings as well as with animal control. The Commission will review his hourly rate during budget preparation. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the assignment of building permit and flood planning management and associated duties to Terri Jo Bennett. Ms. Bennett will continue her current responsibilities and duties as Administrative Assistant to the Commission and as Addressing and Mapping Coordinator. The Commission will review her hourly rate during budget preparation. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the assignment of duties and responsibilities regarding attendance at weekly Commission meetings for the purpose of recording matters for minute preparation to Jack One Dinklock. Ms. Dinklock will continue her duties and responsibilities of minute preparation, minute indexed, and duties as Secretary to the Commission. The Commission will review her hourly rate during budget preparation. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the employment of Michael Heeler as full-time Maintenance Department employee. Effective date of employment is February 21, 2012, at the rate of $13.50 per hour. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the transfer of Michael Harris to the position of Program Director and Case Manager for the Lewis Upshur Braxton Community Corrections Program, effective February 19, 2012, at the annual salary of $30,000. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the employment of Stacy Truman as temporary part-time Case Manager for the Lewis Upshur Braxton Community Corrections Program. Effective date of employment is February 8, 2012, at the rate of $12 per hour. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the increase in the hourly rate of pay of Twilight Wolford from $10.29 to $10.79, and of Krista A. Jackson from $10 to $10.50. Effective date of pay increases for both is February 26, 2012. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed G. Pletcher, the agreement that the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the Cooperative Grant Agreement and all related documents filed here in West Virginia in the amount of $3,200 for the benefit of the Upshur County Citizens' Court. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the letter of support for the Upshur County Development Authority's Transportation Grant Proposal. The Commission approved the following for your information items as listed. The Commission recessed at 10:30 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 10:45 a.m. The Commission met with Debbie Thacker Wilphone to review matters concerning the recording of Upshur County Commission Minutes. The Commission recessed at 11:30 a.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Policy Board at 1:00 p.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Departmental Supervisors at 2:00 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 2:55 p.m. The Commission met with Greg Harris for discussion on maintenance issues concerning the WBU County Extension Office, the Upshur County Recreational Water Pool, and roof leak and electrical issues at the Upshur County Public Library. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission meeting adjourned at 4:00 p.m.
Are the annotations or corrections to the minutes as read? And after a motion, they'd be approved as such. So, on favor say aye. The same time?
Yes.
Okay, it's 9:15, and we have Jake Jacob E. Rigor, Prosecuting Attorney, Laura A. Queen, Victims Advocates Coordinator for the Victims of Crime Grant Application. Good morning, Jake.
Good morning. How are you all doing this morning?
Quite good.
As you indicated, Donnie, I'm here today to request the Commission's support again on our Victims of Crime Grant application. We've been receiving this grant since 1997. Our grant allows us to have a full-time Victims Advocate within our office to deal with victims of crime, try to meet their needs, and deal with criminal process. Laura Queen has been our Victims Advocate since 2002. She does an excellent job. She has a lot of passion for her job. She's been a very valuable resource for my office and for the community. So, we're just asking your support for the grant again. The amount we're requesting this year is $36,645. It's a little bit of an increase from what we had received last year. They had previously, at different points in time, asked us to monitor requests and funds, but this year they were allowing a little bit of an increase. We're asking for it. So, you know, what I'll do is kind of turn it over to Laura, let her talk to you about the services she's provided over the last year. Again, we just ask for your support. If she have any questions after she's finished your class, answer them.
Thank you, Jake.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Back again. As always, I appreciate your support in the Voca grant, through Prosecuting Attorney's Office, on Victim Services Coordinator. As Jake said, it's been, over the past few years, we've been told not to request any more than we did the year before. This is the first year in a while that they haven't put a cap on it, and that's the reason for the change in the Voca fund request. We always have to have a 20% match of some kind, in kind or cash match, and it's calculated in that budget summary that I gave you. Also, this year, they told me I could get a new computer.
It's about time.
With grant funds, actually. We haven't had a new computer funded by the grant since 2003, so they're allowing me to do that, too, and that's in the pledge request as well. Just to give you a few numbers, from January 1st, 2011, to December 31st, 2011, there were actually 1,391 misdemeanor cases through the magistrate's office, and 134 felony cases. And of those, through my Victim Voca Annual Performance Report, I saw 289 new victims of crime in that time period. Of that, 122 were victims of domestic violence. And this shows the need for the support of the Voca grant as well. We work hand in hand with our prosecutors, officers, prosecutors who handles domestic cases, to provide services to the victims and prosecute those defendants. We had a monitoring visit. Jake can tell you about that, too. We, every year, have to be monitored on whether we're meeting our goals and objectives and how money's being spent through the Voca grant. And we were told that Upshur County's a model program, and they use our application process as a guide for other counties and new applicants for grants. And I think, I can say for myself, I take pride in my job, and I know we do a good job through the prosecutor's office in providing services to victims of crime. So, again, I'm just going to ask you-
Are the numbers up or down?
Numbers, they kind of go up and down from year to year, just kind of a rise and fall. One year, we may have 1% or 2% lower, and the numbers are certain. I can tell you that with my grant application, I have to estimate how many victims I anticipate serving. And in last grant's application, I estimated 290. I don't know how I come up with that number. Usually, it's somewhere between 300 and 10.
Could you give a guess?
Yeah. Well, I can tell you that since, in this past grant cycle, which runs from July 1st to January 31st of this year, I've already seen 225. So, I have to give a percentage of, you know, that I'll provide, 75% to victims of crime. And I've gone through that already, and it's only seven months into the grant cycle, so.
Laura, could you explain what some of the services are that are available to victims of crime in Upshur County?
Well, you know, my job is to identify or, through referral, provide court advocacy to a victim if they have to come to court for any purpose. Make sure that they have services if they're, you know, if it's a violent crime, that may be injuries. I'll make sure that if they have a need for medically related compensation restitution for certain crimes. But it's just a, it's not a system most people are navigating, and, you know, they have a lot of questions, you know, from the time of their victimization until sometimes well after the case is completed. So, it's a variety of services. I hook them up with Crime Victims Compensation Fund if that's necessary, and just kind of handhold and listen and follow them through the process and make sure that they have an opportunity and have input into how the case is resolved.
And there's been an increased retention of four to two victims, certainly in the last 20 years or more. But prior to that, there were no means by which victims of violent crime had resources or at least counseling or some means by which they could be assisted. I know firsthand from talking to people who've worked, working with you in the system, very positive comments concerning you and the operation you have. I think the citizens of Upshur County would be well, you know, believe themselves to be well served by you and Jake and the Senate.
And again, I'm just asking for support throughout the next grant cycle of this application, and we get signatures on that.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the request of the grant and authorize the President to sign all documents?
I'll make that motion.
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
The same time? You want to hand it up here, I'm going to go ahead and sign. Luke?
We're here all day. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Congratulations on doing a good job, Laura. I'm sure everybody that you help certainly appreciates it considerable.
I appreciate the way you've done this.
Okay, we have just a couple of minutes before our next scheduled appointment, so we will go down and take care of some of our other items while we're waiting.
First item, the Office of the County Clerk asks that that meeting be moved from the agenda. It is not ready for consideration.
All right, we will do that. And number two is approval of lease agreement dated February 19, 2012, for the Braxton County location for the Community Corrections Department. Any questions on that? It's just basically a standard lease agreement for the location in Braxton County.
Yes, it's the same agreement we had in place previously. It's just renewed that agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agreement. I'll provide the President to sign the documents.
So moved. I'll second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
The same time, motion carried. Next item is approval of agreement with the Administrative Office of Supreme Court of Appeals to employment of Dalton L. Seager for Upshur County magistrate's court. Now, we had approved an agreement a couple of weeks ago. This is just a change in the law and a change in the agreement, is that correct?
Yes, in the previous agreement, they had stated that the reimbursement to the county could only be for time spent on the worthless check cases. Well, that was in the agreement, and we put a note on the approval that you could only work on worthless check cases if that was all we were going to reverse. But they had changed the law and allowed worthless check funds to be spent for other purposes. You can employ somebody for that office, and they can do other duties and functions. So, the new agreement reflects that.
So, basically, you'll be able to work on worthless check and other things?
Other functions, and then all the reimbursement will be from the worthless check according to the revised.
Kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this agreement. I'll provide the President to sign the documents.
So moved.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
The same time? Performance of one full-time physician for the Maintenance Department.
The recommendation is a Michael Wayne Campbell. Effective date, February 26th, is at the rate of pay of $11 per hour. He currently has, working for an HVAC contractor and has a master plumber's license also. As a recommendation from Mr. Harris and myself.
Well, HVAC equipment we have, I think, would be a welcome to have someone on board with that, with those credentials and that experience. Well, we've brought our fishing, plumber, plumber, another plumber, and we're upgrading that requirements, or I think that's going to be a benefit to the county. Okay, do we have a motion to approve this individual? Is ready to play?
I'll make that motion.
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
The same time, motion carried. Okay, it's 9:30, and we have Wes Reeve and Mary Alvall for the American Legion, Support for Voter Registration and Voting Program. We hope you'd like to step up. Kevin?
Morning.
Morning. Morning.
Good morning, and thank you for being here. Debbie is our backup, by the way.
Oh, okay.
We're with the, of course, the Frankie Bartlet posts of the American Legion, and we've been working on one of our four pillars of the veterans organization called Americanism. And the National Headquarters of American Legion has endorsed and recommends all posts to participate in the Get Out the Vote program. We hope to set an example for the other 54 American Legion posts in the southwest region. As members of the American Legion, we're nonpartisan. We have but one goal, which is to get registered voters to go vote. We all know the history of our voting here in Upshur County, and that's what Debbie has and I have been talking about, and she endorsed and said that it would be a good thing. And so, we just want to thank you for your participation as a County Commissioner. Thank you also for getting the voting with the city at the same time, because we think that that's an excellent thing for the convenience of the voter, and so we appreciate that. And then, our goal, what did you say, our goal? Every vote is important, and what we're going to do, or we plan to do, is provide any registered voter an opportunity to come to the county courthouse during early voting period, during the whole early voting period. And then, on Election Day, we're going to try to do the same with our volunteers who are veterans from the Legion, and that's our mission, is to let you be aware of what we're going to do. Debbie's going to be reviewing some of our announcements in the newspaper and, say, with like Elks and our newsletters going out to make sure that we've got the dates and everything right, so we're not putting out any misinformation. That's why she's our editor today.
Okay, we've all heard your efforts, and it's a shame that the voting turnout is as low as it is across the country, thanks to the apathy of taxpayers and the voters, but if people just understand that every vote does count.
This is one way that we believe as veterans, we can provide, continue to provide a service to the residents of our community and to keep serving our country at the same time. So, that's our game plan.
Who, none of the veterans, understand and value and treasure those rights that we preserve, you've helped preserve.
Thank you.
Very much. Debbie, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I just think it's a great idea. It's all nonpolitical, and they're trying to encourage the voters to get out and vote, and I think it's a great idea.
Wes, Mary, Dennis asked me today to try to read some numbers from Salvation Army for you.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yes, he did.
Salvation Army numbers? I'll have those before the days of our, I'm surprised if someone hadn't got back to you.
If I don't see you.
Yeah. We have those today.
Would you like a copy of them? Thank you, miss.
And combining the city and counties assisted here, obviously, to reduce your overhead and everything else.
Yes, hopefully, it will, it's a melting situation for everyone.
Okay, our next item is correspondence from the West Union Solid Base Management Board concerning appointment procedure to county solid base authority boards. Parker, if you'd like to elaborate on that?
Evidently, there are some counties that were not in compliance. Upshur County, in my review, is, but there are certain appointing agencies, and of course, the term of office for members of the solid least authority board. The state board sent that out for trying to get everybody into the same rotation.
You were in good shape.
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, well, that's wonderful. Okay, next item is notice of public hearing concerning the Adrian Public Service District Waterline Extension Project at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, February 23rd, 2012. Information on page 19. Public hearing. Upshur County Commission is considering submitting an application to the state of West Union Small Cities Block Grant Program Finance Port in Adrian, BSD, page 5.
6.
6. There you go. Water extension project. Small cities block grant portion is expected not to exceed $1,500,000. Citizens of Upshur County is facing those of low and moderate income, residents of lighted and deteriorated areas, and all other interested persons may comment on this proposal prior February 23rd, 2012, by writing Upshur County Commission, 38 West Main Street, by County of West Virginia, 26201. There is a hearing, and a public hearing to be held Upshur County Commission Office on Thursday, February 23rd, 2012, at 10:30 a.m. So, there's the public notice of the public hearing.
As you gentlemen are probably aware, they did receive, I think it was $200,000 last year for planning development of the project, so this is the next step, and hopefully they'll receive funding then to put that plan into effect.
We're still a good deal to go through before we get to the completion stage. Yeah. Yeah, the next step is to get the small cities block grant, which I think everyone was surprised that they didn't get it this year, but that's the way government works sometimes. It's going to be tougher and tougher. It's a good project. And we have our home confinement report. The home confinement savings for January is $46,312.20, which includes the income and also the savings of the regional jail bills. What was our regional jail bill for January, Willie?
$32,000.
$32,000, so the savings was more than the bill. That's a- Always a good sign. Yeah, it would have been about $78,000 off home confinement, so it's a good program. And I think the state's starting to look at more things like this, and they considered building another regional jail, but when they considered the cost, they thought, well, maybe we better look at some other names of, such as home confinement, community corrections. And we have our Lewis Upshur Animal Control Report, for your viewing pleasure, and our comm center calls, attendance, notice of the meetings, meeting minutes, or review schedule. Tomorrow, we have a call and a long-gas hearing, so that'll be a nice long day. We haven't had too many people come in, but we're still due the 23rd. Does anyone else have any, have anything, just right before the commission?
Aye.
Creed? Will, you have anything?
At this time, we have a stack of paperwork to do.
At this time, we have a stack of paperwork to do.
Well, we will-
I'd like to recognize Jackie Dinklocker in her capacity as a reader of the minutes and keeper of the minutes. Did a fine job this morning, Jackie, and I do well.
You're just glad he recognized you, aren't you?
That's a lot of reading to go through without taking a break.
They had a pitcher of water up there next time.
That was an extra long one this morning.
You accomplished a lot last week, it was a busy schedule.
Okay, well, we will resort to pay the bills.